Jane.
Welcome to the April 24th City Council meeting. This will be a little, this will be a little different from our usual work session. First, we're going to have interviews of the Planning Commission applicants. Then there will be a session, a work session about the steam plant and then an executive session. So before we start, I want to assign questions to, Mike will ask question number one. Claire, will you do number two?
Sure.
And Alan, number three?
Sure.
Okay. So I think we can do exactly the same thing for each candidate. And I will explain and I'll ask you to introduce yourselves after. So. Welcome. I know you know most of us, but we'll introduce ourselves anyway. I'm Betty Taylor, current council president. We'll start with Chris over there.
Chris Pryor, Ward eight.
Hi.
Sarah, Ward seven.
Alan Zalinka.
Emily Semple, Ward one. And no, I'm not a movie star today. I had cataract surgery.
Okay.
Jennifer Yeh, Ward four.
Hi Ken, I'm still Mike Clark, Ward five.
Hi.
Okay. Look, Ken, when you start, you have three minutes to make a statement. And please say your name for the tape, for the sake of the recording, even though we know it. And there will be a yellow light to show you it's getting near the end of the time and a red light to say time's up. And after that, we will be asking you questions, but that's a new time, new timing.
Okay. All right. Well, my name is Ken Beeson. I'm interested in being on the Planning Commission. I first off, I want to start and thank you for inviting me in to talk with you today. In terms of experience and qualifications, I covered it in the written material pretty well. I'd emphasize I have 30 years public utility experience over at E-Web. And that experience is in the, on the management, operations, and planning side, mostly on the electric, electric side of the utility. I also have community volunteer time. I think the combination of that and my, the fact that I've lived in the community, better part of my life, gives me a pretty good foundation for being an effective Planning Commission member and participation. In terms of why I want to do this, in terms of what I bring, I would say I don't have any particular or specific agenda. I do bring a set of what I'd call some basic values that I think that help inform my work or would inform my participation in this kind of work. It includes a strong commitment to sustainability, a commitment to the environment, to the air and to the water, to the land. I'm committed to livability in the community, and that would be, I think, how that is defined in terms of council policies or goals and certainly in terms of the community interest. I believe in giving strong consideration as we go through deliberations on any questions, strong consideration to the total community. And I mean by that, everyone who lives here and I guess no one left behind or no one's interests left behind, if you will. And finally, and I'm, it's important to me just to continue a response to the, to the challenge and the issues around climate change, which I think this community is doing a good job on. Continued focus on reducing our carbon footprint. I consider myself part of what I think might be a majority of the city and the state, maybe even the country, that sees some urgency in this kind of thing. So those are the types of things that I, I would kind of, I guess, form kind of part of my, how I would consider and, and address, address the work. I would conclude and tell you I'm very interested in doing community service. I'm interested in this particular work and I appreciate your consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You stopped just in time.
I did. But it's good.
Now, we have a total of 10, a maximum of 10 minutes for you to answer three questions. The questions are in front of you if you want to look at them. And councillors will be asking you those, those questions.
All right.
And Mike is number one.
Thank you, Betty. Madam Acting Mayor, I'm sorry.
Just the council president.
This is going to sound vaguely familiar because I think you just mentioned some of this, but what key issues would you hope to address as a member of the Planning Commission?
Well, certainly, I guess what I'd call out is livability, that kind of thing. I, I talked a bit about, I think, what I would consider kind of the values I would bring to the work. If I was to get a bit more specific, I, it's, you know, I'm assuming the community will grow. I think there's certainly process in place to expand the city as needed. My preference, I think my own particular set of values around the community would be that we are on an ongoing basis looking as best we can to use available property. Certainly, consistent with the statutes, the council goals, and consistent with the concerns of the community, I think there's a lot of value in that in terms of using some of the existing infrastructure and also our ability to do things that are consistent with what I look for for the environment or some of the carbon issues I talked about. So I think that a lot, a key issue is just the idea of, I mean, I would think there's quite a bit of focus on that as different questions come to the, to the Planning Commission. And I would see that as pretty important.
All right. I've got the next question. As a group, the Planning Commission often works on lengthy processes and decisions. Describe your skills, experience, and approach that will assist you in working in a constructive and collaborative manner.
Well, in my professional life in, in the past, prior to retiring, I think I have pretty extensive experience working with groups, working on particular issues. I'm capable of and prepared to do what I would expect to be some pretty extensive homework. I would expect to come to the meetings prepared and, and able to, I guess, kind of represent my, my thoughts. I would also, I think, be ready, particularly in the early stages, if I was appointed, to listen, be able to ask questions. I think I'm able to work to find consensus and I would look to try to find consensus as we went through and considered issues. So I think I can say I have pretty good experience working in a collaborative kind of environment like that. I think, I think that would be it.
Ken, I have a third question for you. The Planning Commission must often consider and balance complex issues when reviewing planning documents and making land use decisions. In your opinion, what are the most important factors for the Planning Commission to consider in these efforts?
Well, I, I mentioned, I guess, I think fundamentally, when you're, when you're looking at this, it's important that we go through and are well-versed in the detail, but also able to kind of see the, the global issues, if you will, for any particular questions that come up. And if, if I, yeah, if I were to think that the, the most important things for the Commission to consider when addressing any question would probably be to be sure that we're aware of and staying, I don't know if I want to call it the confines, but kind of in the context of applicable statutes, applicable regulations, whether they be city or state or federal. Also, the council, goals, objectives, policy around any particular question. And last, but not, I don't mention these in a particular order of preference, but certainly the, the concerns and the issues of the community and whether that's the community particularly affected by whatever the question is and the, the greater community. So I think those would be the three I'd call out.
Thank you. We have three applicants for one position and we'll be announcing our, and everyone will be asked exactly the same questions by the same people. We'll be making, announcing our decision on June 10th at the 7:30 meeting.
Okay.
Thank you for coming in.
Thanks very much.
Leave the questions.
Oh. Trying to save paper. Be back.
Chris did his job well. Somebody should pour water for them. I didn't think of him.
Oh, really? Maybe he got on the call.
In case you're thirsty.
Welcome, please.
I don't think there's enough time to drink. Three minutes.
No, but you just got served by a councillor, so that's good.
I think, I think some water is nice to have at hand.
Yeah, well, afterwards, I guess.
Welcome.
Yeah.
You will have three minutes to make a statement, but first, we'll have, I am Betty Taylor, council president this year, and the other councillors will introduce themselves.
Chris Pryor, Ward eight.
Sarah, Ward seven.
Emily Semple, Ward one. I had eye surgery. I'm not trying to hide.
Jennifer Yeh, Ward four.
But you look cool. Mike Clark, Ward five.
And you, please state your name at the beginning of your statement.
Young.
You will have a maximum of three minutes and there will be a yellow light to show you the time is almost up and a red light to show you the time is up. That little thing in front of you.
My name is Jan Philinger, Ward two. Good afternoon, City Council. Thank you for this opportunity. I have lived in Eugene for more than 22 years. My wife and I have two grown children and the friendly neighborhood is our home base. I grew up in Switzerland. At 22 years old, I came to the U.S. to experience life in my other homeland. I earned a bachelor in economics and master's in architecture, both from the University of California at Berkeley. We loved our life in the Bay Area, but with two small kids, it was time for us to move away from hectic life. So we moved to Eugene in 1997, which had everything on our must-have list, a university and a symphony hall, a library, access to beautiful nature and outdoor activities, and the potential for thoughtful and sustainable growth in the future. Professionally, I wear many hats. I formed Studio E Architecture in 2006, where we specialize in high energy efficiency projects. I'm a planner and have designed master plans for schools, churches, and neighborhoods. And I'm a businessman and developer. We designed three new developments near 28th Avenue and Friendly Street, creating Eugene's first high-density townhouse development with 12 attached homes clustered around a beautiful shared community garden and a similar 13-home development just a block away where we repurposed an old church into three townhouses. I have a long record of service to community. I was co-chair of the Lane County Human Services Community Action Advisory Committee and served twice on the Community Development Block Rant Advisory Committee. I provided pro bono services to sexual assault support services and Square One villages. I believe that being a citizen means being prepared to serve the community that supports us, to help it grow and change while preserving its qualities. The city's vision for Eugene is good and it includes all the great principles characteristic of a great city for families, business prosperity, and enjoyment. But we now face challenges that will need careful consideration and deliberation and some tough decisions to make in the areas of homelessness, public schools, affordable housing, and climate change. Promoting growth that is meshed with neighborhood livability as well as stewardship of our resources, deliberate and planned growth that is balanced with preservation of quality of life, this is a high bar, but one that I believe we can achieve and I'm willing to work toward. I wish to bring my skills of team playership to the Planning Commission as it takes on the challenges of our city's future growth. I'm thankful for the work that you do and I thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Perfect, perfect timing.
Count on the money. Right there.
You've got an A on that. The next, next, we're going to ask you three questions, the same three questions we'll be asking everyone. And we have a total, maximum of 10 minutes for the questions. They're in front of you, so you can judge your time accordingly. And Mike will start.
Thank you, Betty. Okay. What key issues would you hope to address as a member of the Planning Commission?
It could be interpreted in different ways. Can I ask you a question?
I'm fine with it.
Talking about issues affecting the city.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Well, I, I think for me, as in my background, developing housing or more people, all people is one of the most, is probably the biggest issue that the Planning Commission would want to deal with. There are other issues for other committees. And I feel that the Planning Commission and the planning community and the, and the leaders of our city can do more to promote that. And how that's done, I have personal ideas and visions for that, but I would be working as a team player, as part of the Planning Commission, to review proposals and ideas and, and provide input and advice. That's what I understand the role would be. So even though I may have certain ideas and opinions, I don't see that my ideas and opinions will be what you will be carrying forward. But I have to bring my professional knowledge and experience to analyzing, reading, creating a report perhaps that would be useful for you to move forward or bring to the public and get the community involved.
Thank you. Okay.
I have the next question. As a group, the Planning Commission often works on lengthy processes and decisions. Describe your skills, experience, and approach that will assist you in working in a constructive, collaborative manner.
I'm, I'm very committed to working in teams. I, as a designer, I, you know, I sit at night, late at night, working just by myself, doing little designs. But I like bringing those to a larger group and get everybody to the table in, in my work. It could be planners, it could be city, city staff, you know, I sit down with city staff a lot for my work, and engineers and other consultants, as well as owners or, or representatives of user groups. And I'm so, I think that my skills would be applied in terms of that I have a natural inclination to work as a, to be a good team player that's part of a group that debates, researches, comes back, you know, leave and research, come back to the group and present. And I think that kind of, and I have good ability in that. In my job, I have to read long documents, I have to summarize, I have to, you know, create a summary as well as find the salient points and, and bring those to the table and see what, and eliminate what's less important and bring forward what's more important. So I think my skills of research and development, as well as being a participant in a larger group process, and listening really well and communicating well are the important skills that I could bring to that. Answer your question.
Next on deck.
John, third question. The Planning Commission must often consider and balance complex issues when reviewing planning documents and making land use decisions. In your opinion, what are the most important factors for the Planning Commission to consider in these efforts?
Well, the most important factors, well, I guess the first answer would be it depends on the issue. I mean, obviously, but, but I think that in, that the process in each approach would be to review the issues and find out what data we have and what data we need to gather, potentially delegate additional work. And I would think that the Planning Commission would then put together this work and analyze it and be able to create a coherent, cohesive, and short enough, I guess, because you're all very busy people, but clear and complete process for you to be able to make your decisions. Land use involves a lot, I mean, it's code and law and, as well as community and, and economic issues, obviously, also, because we're talking about businesses also developing. So I think there's, there are so many factors that would be different in, from one case to a next, that it's really hard to say exactly what, what your question is pointing at, maybe, or asking for. But I think as a city council, I know that you want to have community involvement and potentially what we would do is help you facilitate or help, help give you the tools you need to be able to approach the community and be able to show something that is simple enough to grasp pretty quickly and be able to, for the community to respond to and get back to you with, you know, what their input would be.
Thank you.
It's a little hard to, to answer. I think, I found the question difficult, but I hope I got something.
Okay, thank you. And we will be announcing our decision on June 10th at the 7:30 meeting. We have three applicants for one position.
Okay.
Thank you for coming in.
Oh, yes.
Thank you very much. Thank you, council.
You may take the water. Greg, the same people are asking questions each time.
Got you.
To make it exactly the same.
Thank you.
I'm Betty Taylor, City Council President, and the other councillors will introduce themselves.
Chris Pryor, Ward eight.
Sarah, Ward seven.
Greg Evans, Ward six.
Alan Zalinka around the university area.
Emily Semple, Ward one. I had cataract surgery, besides just being cool.
I thought you were just being cool.
I am, I am. You got it.
Jennifer Yeh, Ward four.
Mike Clark, Ward five.
Nice to meet you all. I'm Patricia.
You have, you have three minutes.
Great.
To make a statement and please give your name first, which you were just starting to do, I know. And there will be a yellow light when you're running out of time, a red light to show the end of the time.
Thank you. I'm Patricia Gortney. I'm here seeking your consideration to be a citizen advisor for the City Planning Commission. I'll start with a few comments about my background, then I'll talk about my qualifications and leave lots of time for you to ask any questions you might have. So I was born and raised in Los Angeles, California, in a Mexican neighborhood. I'm one, in one of seven generations of my family in the Los Angeles area. I'm the eldest of four children and the only one to get off and go to college and graduate. I have degrees in sociology from the University of California, Berkeley, thanks to scholarships, and the University of Michigan. I was known at the University of Michigan for getting through the master's and PhD program faster than anybody in the history of the program with two degrees and one baby in three years and 10 months. I came to Eugene 38 and a half years ago to be an assistant professor of sociology at U of O, and I rose through the ranks and was privileged to be recommended, elected, and appointed to various leadership and advisory positions at the U of O and in my professional associations. My qualifications revolve primarily around my skills as, as a demographer. Demographers study human populations. We study the size of populations, the composition of populations, usually by age, race, sex, other variables, and change in populations over time. I figure that my skills as a demographer might prove useful in the kind of work that the Planning Commission does. I don't come with an agenda. I'm seeing myself more as a scientist. I have no training whatsoever in urban planning, and so I don't know the fine details of all of that. However, I'm also a quick read. I'm a good communicator. I study hard. I come to meetings prepared. I retired from the U of O three years ago, and now I'm sort of seeking to give back to the community that has so benefited myself, my spouse, our five children. Is there anything else? I took a few notes here. I do my homework. So I'm interested in helping Eugene preserve the quality of life that we also enjoy, but adapt to inevitable change in population size, composition, and distribution. Do you have any questions for me?
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
There will be three questions now.
Sure.
And we have a maximum of 10 minutes for the question period. There, the questions are in front of you.
Thank you.
And you can judge your time accordingly.
What key issues would I hope to address as a member of the Planning Commission?
Go ahead, Mike.
Mike will, Mike will ask the first question.
Oh, okay. I'm a good reader, too.
We're going to go around and each ask you a question, but you did a great job of doing my part.
Okay.
So you can go ahead and answer that one.
Well, I thought that this position was mainly advisory, so that the members of the planning staff would bring issues to the citizen advisors. I don't come with an agenda. I don't, I mean, I think Eugene does a fabulous job. I don't, I mean, I think Eugene does a fabulous job in, involving community. In fact, I had somebody in my neighborhood want me to carry a flag about how awful some planning issues were, and I had to, I talked to this person and convinced them that actually Eugene is a model of citizen involvement, and if you didn't get the message, you need to listen to your information sources better. I have to say, I don't have a list of issues that I hope to address. I thought that they would be bringing them to us.
Okay. Thank you very much.
So I've got the next question.
Okay, okay.
As a group, the Planning Commission often works on lengthy processes and decisions. Describe your skills, experience, and approach that will assist you in working in a constructive, collaborative manner.
Well, in various leadership positions at the University of Oregon, as the first woman department head, as president of the Pacific Sociological Association, we had major issues to work through. And I was able to help guide both units through creating new ways of doing things and documenting it, and, you know, the sociology department's constitution and bylaws that I wrote at my home computer with input from my colleagues ended up getting adopted by other departments at the University of Oregon when the faculty unionized. Much of my research is actually in conflict and dispute resolution, and I have used evidence from the city of Eugene and its environmental community activists as evidence in, in publications. I listen, I do my homework, I'm not afraid to make difficult decisions, but again, I see this role mainly as advisory in helping members of the planning office do their work, rather than leading them through the, the muck. Does that help?
Patricia, I have the third question.
Mm-hmm.
The Planning Commission must often consider and balance complex issues when reviewing planning documents and making land use decisions. In your opinion, what are the most important factors for Planning Commission to consider in these efforts?
I think the Planning Commission is just in a difficult position most of the time, where they're taking input from the community and they have to weigh that input, and then that they've got the, the rules and laws that they work under, and then they've got developers seeking to push around some of those issues sometimes, but community members seeking to do that, too. If I can help them balance those things out and listen to all groups, I would think that I was doing my job. Again, I don't come with an agenda. And I'm not trained as a city planner or an urban planner, but I'm really good at analyzing data and considering different points of view.
Thank you very much.
You're very welcome. Thank you.
We will, we're interviewing three people for one position.
Thank you.
We'll be announcing our decision on June 10th at the 7:30 meeting.
Does that mean I should be present, or should the three candidates be present?
It's up to you.
Okay. Thank you.
If you'd like to watch us, you can, you may. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye. Okay, next item of business. Next item is a workshop about the steam plant. I think we have some visitors to talk to us. Will you tell us your names, too, even though we know, we probably know the people?
Mark from Mayor.
Mark Mixis.
Amanda De Souza, City of Eugene.
Any Mark will do.
I should announce the mayor is.
Yeah, Urban Renewal Agency.
Oh, oh. Thank you. I should announce that the mayor of Venice is in Decatur, Georgia, attending a walkability conference. That's why she isn't here, and I think the city manager will probably, probably be here soon. I opened the meeting of the Urban Renewal Agency.
Okay. Thank you.
And I think the city manager's going to say something, maybe.
Okay.
And go.
Okay.
Would you like to say something before?
No, ma'am. Just want to get started.
Okay, so we have a brief presentation here today to show you the development team's proposal, and I'll just kick it off. So over the past few months, we've seen a lot of progress happening in the downtown riverfront redevelopment, including entering into a development agreement with Williams and Dame and finalizing funding for the riverfront park last week. Today, we're here to talk about the third critical piece of the downtown riverfront development, the steam plant. Anchored prominently at the southern end of the development site, the steam plant has the potential to be a place of community pride that connects the city to the river. But as you can imagine, bringing the building into its next life is going to be challenging. Today, you'll hear from representatives of the development team, who will present their proposal for reuse of the steam plant, sharing their vision, approach, and what they foresee are the largest hurdles they're facing. After hearing from the team, we'll be asking you to provide direction for the next steps. Before I hand it off to them, I'll quickly recap the process that brought us here today. In April of last year, you approved a process and criteria for the disposition and redevelopment of the steam plant. Those are found in attachments A and B in your packet. The request for qualifications was released in May of 2018, and in August, the agency director invited the development team, led by Mark and Mark, to prepare a full proposal of the steam plant, for the steam plant. Since August, the team has been engaged in due diligence. They've brought in architects, engineers, and other experts to assess the building's potential, meet with community stakeholders, and explore financing strategies. Earlier this year, we partnered with a team to complete a community outreach process, and you'll hear more about those efforts from the team in a little bit. And then earlier this month, the River Guides evaluated the proposal based on the approved criteria and unanimously recommended negotiating deal points with the development team. And I'll provide a little bit more information about their discussion later on. And so that brings us to today, where we are seeking direction from you. And so with that, I will hand it off to the development team.
Thank you all for inviting us to be here today and for taking time to hear about this proposal. So we began actually working on this in, in 2015 was when this team came together. And we, we all started with a, with a common goal, which was to maximize the, the public benefit, the public utility of the steam plant. I grew up here in Eugene, and we would bike by the steam plant pretty much every week, going out to, it was kind of a common family thing, to go bike out to Valley River, and it was always a very cool building. And when I had a chance to actually walk through it for the first time in 2015, it was just an amazing experience, the, the quality of the light, the proximity to the river, the view that you get when you're standing on the roof, the, just this, it has this really amazing hardware inside and out, and it just, the, the notion that it could be a target for demolition just was, was really, just, I don't know, was a real challenge. So that was when I initially hooked up with Mark Mixis and Raul Broca and Jesse Fittipaldi and Matt Sayer, and sort of started to think about what could, what could this facility become. And we've prepared actually a little video that, that, that shows, shows in broad sketch what, what we're thinking for the space. And if you can fire that up, we're gonna turn it into a river. No. But the, and this, what, this, this video actually, this is a, was put together by, well, it looks like it's playing on the laptop.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're not mirroring.
I see. Standby. There we go. There you go. That's as it is today, and this is the current concept, and this was a ton of work that Raul Broca did to, to really, it was a very challenging project technically, because none of the floors actually line up with the out-of-doors. And so this is a, this is the evolution, this is the evolution of the, really, two major design phases after going through public comment. And what you see is a ground floor tap room with space for community arts and performance, opening directly onto the river path into the park, and then what is now the water intake for the steam plant becomes a community river overlook that's attached to the park. This is one of the elements, the design elements, that when we, when we talked to the folks in the community engagement process was, was a really high priority. I think something like 84% of the respondents said that the, that river overlook feature would be either, you know, it was either important or very important. We can go back to the, to the slides. We've got some, some more pictures of some of those design elements. But the, the idea really is to build a building inside of the existing shell of the steam plant. So on the ground floor, it would be a, a public house, and there you can see the actual exposed hardware from the boiler. And then on the upper floors, we see a combination of academic programming as well as co-working to really maximize the, the public benefit of the space, so that it's not, we're not taking whole floors of the building and just going to a, a single entity, but really saying, if you want to, want to lease a desk overlooking the river as a, as a, as an entrepreneur, as an artist, micro studio space, small office space, but really get as many people as possible in the community to be able to benefit from this truly unique space. Yep, there we go.
So we'll, I guess you'll see our faces up there, you recognize most of us. One of the important things to understand is we are local, this is our community, we're truly invested in this project, and we've invested significant resources of our, our time, effort, and dollars to get the project to this point. So I think that shows we're, we're truly committed to seeing the success of this project. In addition to the team you saw there, we brought on experts to help us with the technical challenges of the project, historic preservationists, structural engineers, we brought Highland Construction onboard to help us with the pricing and constructibility challenges. So we've done a significant amount of due diligence in order to make sure that what we're showing you today can be executed.
So the, it, it's sort of as root, the, this effort is meant to realize the master plan vision for the riverfront, to really bring the community to the water. One of the, one of the elements that was, was really primary in that vision was the concept of Restaurant Row, and so we've really taken that and integrated it into, into the steam plant ground floor idea. The, the ground floor tap room and micro restaurants, so this is, this would be a place where it would feature, really highlight all of the amazing work that goes on in the Willamette Valley, in the food and beverage industry. The micro restaurant kitchens would allow the incubation of new restaurant ideas, and the idea here is that those would actually be changed out on a fairly frequent basis, so that you've got a lot of, as a, a new restaurateurs, rather than having to innovate absolutely everything about their spaces, would have an, an existing audience that they could build into existing infrastructure and, and try out new concepts and, and build new fanbases. We heard very clearly that the river overlook was, was a very desired feature, and one of the nice pieces of this is it's a river overlook that's activated by the building space, so that the park becomes the, that river park and that patio, and all of that ends up really actually getting a lot more, it's not just someplace that you bike through, but it's actually becomes, the steam plant really helps that become a destination for the community and not just for people who are living in the new river district. We heard very clearly during the public engagement process that we went through, and we'll go into that in a little bit, that, that Eugene needs more spaces for the performance and display of art. And so the, what, this actually really informed the, that second phase of the design process, where, where before we had kind of left the, the boiler as it was in this second iteration, we, we take away all of the brickwork and really open that up as its own, really as its own exhibit to the, the historical roots of the building, but then also it becomes a stage for music, for performance art, for, some of those walls are just giant, so you can, you can have a space that can really host much larger pieces. And, and in the, in the design of the building, there was really an effort made to preserve the quality of the light, the flow of light through the building, so that even on the upper floors, they're all open in terms of, you know, the glass transmits the light through both sides, and actually, the opening up of the boiler will increase the amount of light that's coming in from those south-facing windows. The, the, the vision that we're pursuing for the upper floors is all about really maximizing the benefit of that river-looking space. I mean, there really isn't, the, the only other space like this in Eugene is the actual E-Web headquarters that's right on the river, but there's, there's nothing else that's that close, that has that much of a view. And the steam plant's really at this very kind of unique bend in the river. So when you're, when you're in the building, or when you're on top of it, you can actually see upriver and downriver, looks right across to Alton Baker, it's just a phenomenal space. And, and every time I've walked in the building, I've felt this sense of inspiration, and that's something that we really wanted to capture for the, the, the companies that are doing cool innovative things, startups coming out of the U of O, and, and linking that with a space that has a lot of public access. So those, those themes of, of a, a learning institute, and we've been talking about a sustainability and leadership institute, we have mixed with a space where people go to work, and then a space where people come to play, to have dinner, to have a, a beverage on the water, that that intersection really will create a really vibrant place, kind of a community of its own within the building, that's, that's this anchor point of the river district.
I know you've heard a lot, as you've been presented the parks, about the cultural landscape, we talked a lot about that during the planning process. This is the last remaining structure that'll be on the site, and we're committed to salvaging and restoring this and listing it with National Historic Register and going through their program to see that this building is preserved. We know there's the iconic historic facade, but there's also the story that's told about what was in this building, the old boiler that Mark talked about, where we'll be opening it up and exposing how that worked. You'll see in the image that red object in front is one of the turbines inside the building, we're proposing to bring that out. You'll see the green entry element there is actually the gantry crane that sits inside the building. So really, we want to tell the story of the history of this building. In addition, we're looking at innovative construction techniques, so we're looking at inserting a cross-laminated timber building inside this existing facade. That's a technology that's regional, it's low embodied energy, it, it ties to the roots of this community with timber, but also is a very forward-looking technology. And so we want to bring that into the building and really show off that technology as part of this project. When we were first sort of given the criteria that you all set forth, there was a desire to see what we could complete by 2021, and that was a fairly ambitious schedule. I think when we went back to staff, we said, well, we, we don't know if we can make a commitment to fully complete this project by that timeframe. And we started sitting down with the 2021 staff and saying, hey, what, what do we want to do with this site? And we came up with a phased approach to implementing this project. Our goal is to phase this, to create a canvas or a space that could be used to have a fan festival, to do a celebration, to really celebrate our riverfront park when 2021 comes along. And so this will be a shell, we would go through structural upgrades, we would do the historic preservation on the facade, and really create a canvas to allow events to, to happen on this site. And so we're proposing that we would have that completed in time to do events along the river in 2021.
So in, in the early part of this year, we went through a, a really deep community engagement process. We were planning originally on doing six events, we ended up doing 10 public events. We were at the Asian Celebration, we were at the First Friday Art Walk at the Broadway Commerce Center. We had thousands of people come up and engage with the team and talk about the project. We actually had an, I was amazed, we had an open house just for the steam plant, and I think 150 people showed up, which, which was, actually really blew me away. And then about 1,000 people submitted written feedback on the proposal. It was, it was overwhelmingly positive. It was, it was overwhelmingly positive. There was a lot of great stuff in there. And that, that feedback actually really went back in and significantly informed the upgrades to the, the design. And I'll show you just a few of those. So our, our original concept and the, the images on the left are what we went out for public comment with. And the, what, what, what became of that is, are the images on the right. And really probably the biggest, two biggest elements of that were, one is that we had a fairly modern looking office building integrated into the steam plant, the, the, the old, the sort of cool parts of the historic structure. And it, that had a bit of a, that juxtaposition, I think was, got some pushback on the, on the historic accuracy side. And then if you look at the images below, the, the real challenge that we faced was, was the grading. So the, the turbine deck, which is where the turbines currently sit right now, is, is nine feet above grade and the actual floor of the steam plant is about six feet below grade. And so we had, you know, a, what, 70 foot ramp in the front getting you in. And then that river overlook had actually a bridge out to an elevated platform. And the, all of the feedback that we got around accessibility, around the, a low height bridge going through the park, that really informed a desire to get people in and out at grade. And so it was really one of those, those retrospective blinding flashes of the obvious. But just when, when the architect team said, well, why don't we just fill that area of the building and raise the level of the floor? All of a sudden, we were able to have a structure that, that didn't have such an imposing mass, got people in and out at ground level and really, and ultimately had more usable square feet of space in the building, which was pretty cool. And that, we, we also heard, and again, the images on the left are the, are the, the before. And the, when people saw this, the, what was sort of a very large open space, they're like, oh, you know, looks cool. I'll go down there once, but what's going to bring me, why am I going to want to come back into this vault over and over again? And that really has changed with, with now a ground floor tap room with roll up doors that open onto the river and onto the bike path and onto that, that, that viewing platform on the river. So just that, it, it's one of those really cool projects where you go out and solicit feedback and actually get a ton of really useful actionable stuff out of it that, that makes the overall design much better.
So I, I started at the beginning talking about the fact that we did a lot of due diligence on this project. And I think one of the reasons we were selected as a team was because we were committed to bringing a financially feasible project forward. So we did fairly detailed estimates. We think we know what the project costs. And we've been working through identifying all the different sources that would go into funding this project. So we have, obviously, our private equity we're putting in and probably will need to raise some money to do this project. The historic preservation is a key piece of a source of the funds. We would be partnering with a tax credit partner who would use those tax credits, provide us equity in order to help fund that project. And that's run through the National Park Service. It's a federal program. We would be bringing commercial debt to the project. Right now, we anticipate a funding gap and it's somewhere around $4 million. And we're still looking at additional sources that could come to this project. One of the things we're looking at is pace financing, which would allow us to leverage the energy savings of putting more efficient systems into the building and reaping those costs over time to pay down that debt. We're looking at ways we can partner for grants on the performing arts and cultural spaces that we put in the building and things like restoring the historic artifacts that are within the project. And I think there's a handful of places where we can partner with the city. And one of the things we talked about early on with staff was where we want to partner with the city are around the items where we get the maximum public benefit. What are the things that people want to see here? What are ways that we can partner with the city to make sure those things can be realized? Certainly, the property acquisition is a key piece of that. We've identified parking as a real challenge for this project. Currently, our site has about 15 parking spaces associated with it. We need, we need many more than that to make this project function the way we've designed it. So we're working with staff on finding a district parking solution that would help serve the park, serve the building and that broader neighborhood as we develop the riverfront. The River Park Overlook, I think, is a natural fit into the work that's currently ongoing with parks right now. That could maybe replace an, an existing one or be an additional overlook that's part of that plan. I mentioned the facade and historic artifact restoration. The 2021 event, I think, could be a really good way for us to bring in additional outside partners, sponsors, people that are related to the 2020 event, that could bring resources to seeing that pavilion be built. And then the dedicated space for community and arts programs within the building, I think, is a place where we could work with the city to fulfill that vision. So timeline, we did talk about 2021 being important. We're working with you now to get approval to negotiate with, with staff over, over deal points on the transaction. The first thing we would do, because it's a long timeframe, is start looking at listing this property on the National Historic Register and becoming eligible for the restoration. And that, that can take 12 to 18 months. So we need to start that soon. We would start Phase One construction in January 2021, deliver that for the summer. As soon as that pavilion is complete, or the events with that pavilion are complete, we would dive right in and, and complete the building for a summer 2022 completion. And that's, that's our presentation. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have a little bit, a couple more slides. They'll go quickly, don't worry. So as I mentioned before, the River Guides met earlier this month to review the team's proposal. Their member list is in Attachment E. The group's evaluation was focused on the primary objective of achieving the successful adaptive reuse of the building. They also considered how the proposal met the four proposal criteria categories. Some of the high level themes from their discussion included appreciation for the commitment the team has already made to the project, given how challenging its redevelopment will be, and also recognition of the major, major challenges that we've already identified, including parking, financing, and also balancing excitement with expectations. The group unanimously recommended that we enter into negotiations. So if you provide us with direction today, here's what potential next steps could look like. Over the next couple of months, we will work with the team to negotiate deal points. And this could include exploring potential partnership opportunities and the agency's role in the project. We'll then bring those deal points to the River Guides for their recommendation and then to the agency board for approval. We anticipate that that could happen later this summer. If deal points are approved, we then enter into an agreement with the team and work with them to bring their vision into fruition. I'll leave you with the agency director's recommendation, which is to enter into an exclusive negotiation period with the team and then return to you with deal points. We'll now pass it back to you for discussion and we're happy to answer any questions you may have. Thanks.
Thank you. Very interesting. So, so far I have one person in the queue to ask questions. Two people, three. Okay, Alan first.
You guys, this is a great vision. I, very, there's a lot of hard work that's gone into getting us to this point. And I very much appreciate your commitment and the hours that you guys put in to be able to pull us together and get, get us to this point. And I appreciate that you're local folks and that makes a big difference, I think, for the council and shows that you care and that you have a commitment to its community. I love the preservation of, of the historic nature of the building and its previous uses. Great adaptive reuse of a, of a, of building. That's always thought was the, you know, this is a, a rough cut diamond that has a lot of potential. And, and, but my thing was always, how do you make it work? How do you make it work financially? I like the mixed use of the, the restaurant and the office space. But the thing that I keep bumping up against is, and this is your job to figure out, is how do you make this economically viable? It's an expensive thing to do. You, you talked about the capital cost and it has a, a large funding gap in it. But also, how do you make it sustain over time to be able to do that? That's my first question.
Yeah. So I think, you know, we have to treat it as a conventional sort of real estate asset in a lot of aspects. It needs to be aspirational. It needs to be a community project. But the underlying fundamentals, it needs to generate income to pay back the debt and investors. And I, I think we have a good mix of sort of public benefit, less true revenue generating. And I don't say that you could pull those out and generate a lot more revenue, because I think those aspects are critical to actually making the whole project work. That mix of public space and, and restaurant space and office space, they're more than the sum of their parts when you put them all together. But I do think we're creating a unique thing here that can generate adequate revenue to support a project like this. It's unique enough. We're at a time in Eugene where office vacancies are very low. The type of office space people are looking for doesn't exist. And if we can pull together partnerships with the U of O, the tech community, the arts community, I think we'll have a, an interesting mix here that will attract people and, and generate income.
You can talk about the WeWork concept. I mean, that was actually a guy, a U of O grad who came up with that idea. Now it's kind of taken off, but you can describe that a little bit more and how it might be viable here.
Well, yes. So WeWork, Miguel McKelvey actually grew up in Eugene and he's a classmate of mine at Roosevelt and at South and went on to found WeWork, I think, 10 years ago. And it has grown from, I had one office building in New York and then they had five and then they had, now they've got, I think, a couple hundred buildings all around the world. It's a multi-billion dollar company. And their whole, the whole secret to their success is taking cool spaces and then really making micro offices and, you know, getting a lot of people to come in and enjoy the, where there are shared spaces in the building, they're very cool spaces. There's coffee, there's places where people mix together and building a really vibrant culture of innovation within their buildings. And it's, they're, that model where you go, where instead of, I mean, if I'm looking to start a company in town and I've, starting out, it's just a few people and we need desks and we need a coffee maker and we need access, you know, starting, renting your own office can actually be a challenge because then you grow and now all of a sudden you don't fit in the office that you rented anymore. With the coworking model, you just add more people, you rent more desks, you add more people, you rent more desks. So it's a very cool model for early stage companies. It's a great model for people who are working remotely. So for all the tech folks in town who are transplants from the Bay Area or wherever and they're, you know, phoning, phoning into Netscape or Google or whatever, this is a place, this type of a place, you'd be able to actually have a community that you're working with instead of working alone in a home office. As we've, we've certainly heard from professors at the University of Oregon, that there is a, a real limit on the, their office spaces at, on campus. And so there has been a desire for folks there to have something that's within very easy biking distance. And then what's just so unique about the space is it's, you know, you're on the third or fourth floor up overlooking the river. It's just a fantastic spot from an active transportation sense and one of the coolest places to actually see Eugene. So, so my sense as a, as a tech worker and entrepreneur is that that's where I would want to, if I were to start a company, I would want to start it in a building like this. And so that's, that's sort of a, but, but having that and then also bringing in the restaurants and the academic programming and arts and so on, just makes it a, makes it a destination.
And the one thing I should say is I, I don't think it's only tech either. I think this can be a much broader appeal. It could be artist studios. It's not as specific to a sector, although tech tends to fit into that sort of ever changing business environment. But this really is for all types of people who work or create art or, or do their thing. So it's, it's not an exclusive type of a office setting.
That model kind of works in New York City where they have 15 million people. Does it work in Eugene with a quarter billion people?
Well, we see it where it, there are share offices now that are full. They're at capacity. I think with some of the challenges they face is they're, they're small in scale. So there's less opportunities for that cross fertilization of ideas. We have an opportunity here to bring in some larger companies that can act as mentors to smaller companies. So I think it's the mix, the unique mix, the location and all the other aspects of this project that make this viable for this community.
The E-Web substation is smack dab right next to it. Does that present any problems? It's not going to move.
Yeah. We've, we've, Mark, Mark keeps saying it might move.
The power lines.
Yeah.
But the, the, there's no problem having the substation next door.
Yeah. I mean, ideally it wouldn't be there, but I think we've accepted it. I don't think it attracts that much from the building. People are looking at the river. That's, that's the view.
Local viewpoint.
Mm-hmm.
Right. But the other, the other big part of this, of course, you already mentioned it, which is parking. How many people do you think will be in this building on a, working and visiting the restaurants? By the way, I wanted the restaurant to be on the third floor since I'm not going to have one of those, but I understand.
So with a mixed use building, there'll be different peak times depending upon whether people are coming after work to grab a bite to eat or spend some time on the river, whether it's the weekend and people are using that ground floor space as they ride by. The most intense use will be from the office use. And we could see up to 200 plus people here. One of the things that we, when we talk about parking, we like to right size it so that to the degree that we can overlap uses. We don't want to just plan for the worst. We want to right size the parking. And I also think that we're in a time of changing patterns. We don't want to invest a lot of crazy money into an expensive parking solution that becomes obsolete. We're looking for sort of that lowest hanging fruit. Are there ways that we can provide parking that may become a future building site in the future? So I think to the degree that we can find those types of opportunities, we're, we're open to that.
Right now, there's plenty of parking down there. Big gravel lot.
Right. And maybe there could be some electrical vehicle, electric vehicle charging stations.
Absolutely, yeah.
Want to have some of those.
Mark will get some of those installed.
Share use vehicle pools, bike share. There are a bunch of different components to kind of a next generation transportation strategy for, really for the whole river zone. But we're, that, that's, it's, the next 10 years is going to be just a sea change in transportation that will affect parking requirements and road requirements and all the rest. And so to, to Mark's point, I think we don't, we don't, we're not advocating for an expensive parking garage that, that built today that's only going to last 10 years in terms of public need.
I think the, the last thing I'd say around that is that we will have to partner with people who will be underwriting this project and they're going to be telling us, you need to solve the, the parking problem here. And we recognize it's a real problem. We'll have to participate in that. But there's external factors that force the viability of this project to, to provide a parking solution.
Yeah. Without a viable parking plan, you don't get financing.
It's unlikely, yeah.
And, and the lot to the other side of the, of the, of the substation is the U of O and aren't the CUP, they just got prohibits being.
It doesn't entirely prohibit it, but it's a lot of restrictions.
If they put a building there, they can have parking for it. Yeah. So this creates a bigger issue for us. And we just took that $6 million we had and, and for, for the riverfront urban real district and cut it down to three, which, to do.
Nine to six.
Nine to six. We cut it down three million. So there's a lot less money to be able to work with, to be able to do this and all the other things, including the parking that needs to occur. One last question is about the overlook. How does that work with the, with the Willamette Greenway? Is that permissible use? I expect that you guys looked into this. And is that part of the restaurant or is it public plaza or what's the vision for that?
Yeah. So we, I, we intend that to be a public space. So it's open to anybody and everybody who wants to come use that space. It will require permitting, joint permitting through the Corps and, I can't remember all the jurisdictions. There's clearly jurisdictional oversight on that. But it's easier than building something new in the waterway. That's a much higher threshold. So the work that the park is doing now, if the timing works, and this is something that I think council and the community wants to pursue, the best time to actually pursue this work would be concurrently with the work that's going on with the park. They're doing a large permit for all the work they're doing in the park. This could easily be added on to that and probably one single permitting process would make that fairly streamlined.
Right. I was going to ask if that could be worked in. And this doesn't create a new thing. It already exists, that intake.
Do you like it in there?
There, yeah.
Big concrete pillar into the water.
Yeah.
Already existing.
Claire.
Thank you. Well, I, I think this is a very exciting proposal. I think it's a very smart and exciting use of the space. I also want to commend you on, I think you did, received an impressive amount of public input on the project. And it was great to hear you say that that really helped spark the innovative approach that you took that actually ended up really kind of cracking the egg open in terms of how to actualize the space. I think even if we weren't about to launch on all these other aspects of our riverfront project, this alone would be exciting. And I can see the great deal of thought and creativity your team brought to the proposal. And I can see the great deal of thought and creativity your team brought to the proposal. It's energizing, it connects with public aspects of the new park in a really deliberate way, and I think will serve a lot of need in terms of a community space in a new neighborhood, which, as you pointed out, will also be a draw for people all over the city, not just folks who are living in that new housing. And, you know, I, I expect there isn't any other building quite like this, situated quite like this anywhere else on the West Coast. And so if this vision is successful, I expect it to be very popular for the types of uses that you are envisioning in there, from the, the performance area, the art gallery, the food, the co-share space, and, you know, if you're successful in getting a partnership with the U of O, with the Leadership Academy, all of those things, I think, are very, very appealing. And as you pointed out, there's a need for some of the more practical aspects that you're proposing. And I could imagine that some of the new residents coming to live in this new neighborhood may also want to utilize the space for their coworking. So, you know, I'm, I'm hopeful that this council can find ways to help overcome some of the barriers that you've pointed out. I think two places in particular, I think the overlook piece, which, you know, you have said are committed to being a public space, seems to me something that this council should look at, or the Urban Renewal Board of Directors should look at, and also figuring out the challenge around parking, because that, and that's come up in other discussions about the entire Riverfront development, so. But thank you so much for bringing this forward, and I'm looking forward to partnering with you on this.
Mike.
Thank you, Betty. I have long thought that the future of our community is on the banks of that river, and I appreciate all the hard work to help us realize that and see that vision brought into reality in this way. My question, and I, I like your plans, I like what you've put forward and the work that you've done so far, my question is of the manager. Help me understand this motion in context. We've already chosen based on, you know, we had a RFP or RFQ or however that was constructed, and chosen, so help me understand the meaning of the motion that's before us.
So there's a couple of things. One is, we actually haven't officially chosen Arkham Mark, and so what this would do is complete that RFP process from the standpoint of, there's actually a council direction that says, yes, this is the partnership that we want to...
We didn't officially choose?
No, that this is what we, who we want to now officially enter into formal negotiations with. And so this is a, as part of what the council's role is, is to make that official.
Okay.
Formal.
Is, is our empowerment of you in this motion to execute this particular plan or to, tell me what it is that you're going to be negotiating?
So what we would do is, any, any large or small deal point, so what we would do is agree on, yes, this is the plan, there could be things around what, what are we going to contribute into that? They've offered some ideas for partnerships, so that would come back as part of that. We could talk about timing, we can talk about materials, I mean, we could talk about typical deal points that then would come back to this council that you would approve.
Okay. Thank you.
So, any other questions from council? I have one that I promised I would ask. Consensus have been asking me, will they have, will the public have access to the roof?
So that's something we've looked at, we have, there's a strong desire to get up on the roof.
Very strong.
You know, we've been, we've been up there, it's totally amazing. So there are some technical challenges with creating assembly space on a roof, and we're working through those. I don't have an exact answer to that. We're deciding how we fire rate the building for safety, how do we provide adequate access for a potential assembly space on a roof. All of those become technical challenges that I'm not qualified to get into today. But we're working with our design team to find ways that we can allow access up to the roof without creating a project that's cost prohibitive to do that.
I didn't mean assemblies, but individuals.
Yeah, so we, right now, we're showing a, yeah, we're showing a rooftop up there now, and, and what it, what we haven't quite figured out is whether we could have, just have it open and allow people to gather up there in an assembly-type way, so...
It's more of the assembly use which covers restaurants that are larger than 50 people or, you know, there's a bunch of techni...
But individuals can go up.
Absolutely. I mean, we have a, we're showing maybe a community room that could be rented on the roof for events, but again, it has to be below a certain threshold, and again, it's beyond my technical expertise to define what that is. But we have to work within those constraints, but absolutely, the roof, people need to be able to get up there and see.
Okay, that was, that's important to a lot of people.
It is really, it's like the best view of Eugene when you're standing on the roof. It's amazing.
Second best, but...
Thank you. I think we're, I think we're ready for a motion. That's the vice president.
Move to direct agency director to A, enter into exclusive negotiations with the Mixis Ronmeyer Development Team for the disposition and redevelopment of the steam plant, and B, return to the agency board with the proposed terms for approval.
Second.
All in favor? Motion passes. Thank you very much, and good luck.
Thank you very much.
Good.
Okay, I'll adjourn the meeting of the Urban Renewal Agency, right?
Uh, no.
Okay, I'll reconvene it. I know we have an executive session coming.
You're going to go into the executive session as the Urban Renewal Agency.
Okay. The Urban Renewal Agency will now have an executive session, and I think there's something...
Flags or something.
Yeah, right.
There's something I need to read at this point.
If you turn it over and read the script starting where it says mayor.
Yeah.
So, all of that.
The Eugene City Council will now meet in executive session.
Oh, that should say the Eugene Urban Renewal Agency.
Oh, the, that's the council here. Eugene Urban Renewal Agency will now meet in the executive session, held pursuant to OR S 192.6602E, to discuss the negotiation of a real property transaction. Representatives of the news media and designated staff shall be allowed to attend the executive session. All other members of the audience are asked to leave the room, and they're doing it. Representatives of the news media are specifically directed not to report on any of the deliberations during the executive session, except to state the general subject of the session as previously announced. No decision may be made in executive session. At the end of the session, we may return to open session and welcome the audience back